... which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Edible with Liberty and Justice for All."
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Caprio. Councilor Doody.
Here.
Councilor Esposito.
Here.
Councilor Fawnin.
Here.
Councilor Flitzy. Councilor Wentworth.
Here.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 3rd, 2012 WPCA Town Council meeting?
I'll make that second.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Fawnin. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Doody.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
I'm staying.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
Item three, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. A, Finance Subcommittee.
The Finance Subcommittee met last Wednesday. One thing that we discussed briefly, and it's included in our packet tonight, is the estimate on the STW conversion. The bid came in from Salamone and Associates for the heating project. They gave us four options, the building committee, four options, and the one that they are recommending is approximately $175,000, which would take up most of the STEEP grant, which is what we had anticipated to be done. So in our packet tonight also, when we get a little further on, we'll see there was information regarding how we might be able to fund getting the rest of the project done, some minimal things done on the project. And the other big thing that we talked about was on sanitary sewers. And at the next WPCA meeting in February, Kurt is going to come back to the council with some proposals of, some ideas of possibly what we can do on our sewer, our connection fee, both residential and commercial, to take a look at that. And as far as bids that are out there right now, what they are looking at is an RFP on the demolition of Amato's, an architect for the high school, continuing on the roof work, and the printing of tax bills. And that was about it. The rest of the stuff is in our packet that we'll go through as far as the financial report and the BOE financial reports. That's it.
Thank you. Item B, Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee.
Mr. Mayor, the Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee met last Thursday night. They had a very good discussion. They had asked for representatives from John's Refuge, current waste ball and recycler, to be in attendance. Andrew and Steven Bezuto were in attendance, and it was a good dialogue. A lot of it focused on what can be done to improve recycling in the schools. And I'm taking a look at some of the dollar impact and waiting on some information to come back from John's Refuge to do an estimate of the tonnage. Because it comes down to dollars and cents, it's beyond the environmental impact, which is significant. But there's a lot of money that's being spent on waste that's not being recycled. And so I will, when I assemble that information, be forwarding it on to the superintendent of schools. There was also a discussion, and you have an agenda item or some information from me this evening about a solid waste committee that will, is under new business, but it's intended to talk about the options that we have going forward. And it's my understanding that there are some significant options, and we had some discussion about that with the Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee. I believe in your packet this evening, we also included photos from their most recent event, which was to help support the electronics recycling, which was the first weekend in November, uh, January, I believe, and very well attended, and a full tractor-trailer load of electronics recycling went out. So the committee continues to do a good job, and as all volunteers, they're great assistants to our program.
Thank you. Item C, Economic Development Commission.
Go ahead, Richard. You were there. I didn't come early enough to hear what you were saying, so.
At EDC?
Yeah.
There has been some discussion about having a joint meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and inviting business owners, potential developers, realtors, and so forth. The timing of that is scheduled for sometime in March, and the town staff, my office, will support researching on locations and bringing in like a breakfast. My understanding is that it may be in these chambers, and we have a guest list of about 20 to 30 people that we'll be inviting, plus the chamber folks as well. There was also a discussion at EDC about developing a website and where, that would be separate and distinct from the town's website, a little more interactive and user-friendly, and we're getting estimates on that as well. And that was about it.
Thank you. Item D, Permanent Project Building Committee.
Permanent Project met last week. I'm speaking in regards to the STW conversion. In our packet is the recommendation from Salamone and Associates in regards to the HVAC. The Permanent Project Building Committee did not approve or recommend anything at this point in time because Salamone and Associates right now is charged with coming up with an estimate of what the cost would be to get the project so that we would be able to open, which basically is doing like ADA bathrooms and some minor painting and cosmetic work, that type of thing. So until those numbers come back to Permanent Project, there's really nothing we can do so that we can see once where the whole thing is. And then at that point in time, it would have to come to the council because additional funding would be needed for the project since we did not get the second STEEP grant.
Thank you, Rose. Can I have a motion to amend to add to the fire department, item B?
I know we amended the initiative to change the fire department under Board of Commissions, in item E.
Moved by Counselor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Esposito. I attended the fire department's meeting, and they had the election of their officers.
Can we have a roll call?
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Mayor Candy Laura.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose.
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni.
Yes.
Councilor Caprio.
Yes.
Councilor Doody.
Yes.
Councilor Esposito.
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin.
Yes.
Councilor Wentworth.
Yes.
I attended their meeting on January 5th, 2012, Company Two. They had the election of officers. Mr. Joseph Italo as chair, Angelo Tosio Jr. as vice chair, and Diane Whalen as their clerk. Some of the things they discussed, they purchased 12 refurbished pagers. The chief, I believe, has one that he is testing right now to see how the performance of it is. Also mentioned that the VINTEC contract will be expiring around June 30th. And Ed Bowden was there, gave a little bit of a presentation on some of our fire apparatus and equipment. And that was basically the meeting. Item four, Town Manager's Report.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just go in order and pick up a few things from the Permanent Project Building Committee. North Grandford High School roof project, we are in the process of putting together the request for architectural services. The format that's required by the State of Connecticut Department of Education is an RFQ format, a Request for Qualification. So we would put out on the street a request. It's not fee-based. That's the second phase of the project. It does, it does involve quality-based selection. QBS is required for this. We've done it before for the bridge project, I believe it was probably the last time. It's a state requirement, and the, I will keep you up to date as to how the format of that will be. Once that architect is selected based on qualifications, then a fee is negotiated, and ultimately the state would approve that, that process. And then we go through with design of the roof replacement portion. And again, we're, we're looking to guidance from the Permanent Project Building Committee to Jeff DiNocchio, who specializes in construction, contract administration. So we're, in the meantime, working on that, and there were a couple of issues related to damages at, at the high school floor that are still being reviewed by the building committee. At NBIS, we continue to have some building envelope issues. We're waiting on some issues on an update from the building official on remaining punchless items for his certificate of occupancy, and there's only a few items left with that. One of the big things we're trying to get resolved is the main entrance doors in the lobby. There's a problem, ongoing problem with the hinges, and we're waiting on the architect to file a written report with the building committee on what the recommended solution will be. And again, the construction attorney is involved with that. On the Swatchick and Wallfield relocation project, we've met again with the project design consultant that's from Nafus and Young. Jim Galligan was in to meet with the Public Works Director, the Town Engineer, and myself. We have recently received revised drawings based on our conversations and our original direction that they received, not just from the town council, but from, but from staff. We'll be proofing those with the Little League, and I believe that on the February 7th meeting of the town council, we'll, we'll be asking for Nafus and Young to come back in and give you a project update so you know where it is before we get ready to go into final design plans. There's still some rough edges to be trimmed out with electrical and irrigation specific design, but I think that the preliminary concept is, is what we originally intended and what the council had set in motion a number of months ago. As Rose reported, the Stanley T. Williams project is moving forward. We are waiting and have just received updated information from Salamone and Associates on the budgeting for the remaining portions of the project that is not going to the Permanent Project Building Committee yet, but as soon as it does, I will get information to the town council so that we can start looking at options. Included in my report for tonight was a summary of where we are with the library projects that were previously bonded and for which there is a balance available. So as we, as the council begins a discussion about funding options to complete this project and long-term capital improvements, I would refer you to that memo, and again, my appreciation to our Treasury Finance Director for, you know, accounting for this and for us coming up with some savings in that particular project. You will have in your agenda package, at the joint meeting that was held with the Board of Education, there was a discussion about an energy efficiency and conservation grant. In your packet tonight, there's a request for an agenda item for a proposed motion, and when that, if you would be so kind as to approve that at some point under new business, then we can have a discussion about what actually we can apply for. The deadline for the applications, believe it or not, is this Friday. So we need to get an, an application submitted if we have any chance of, or any hope to get anything funded. In addition to what I provided you in my written report with the package and discussed at the finance committee was an issue with narrowbanding with the police department. We need to do some study about how we're going to, how we're going to implement the requirement in 2013 for narrowbanding for radio communications for the police department. There's some initial consulting work that we're going to pay for, have to pay for this year, so that we're prepared to move forward, and you'll see it reflected in the police department's capital budget for the upcoming year. The fire chief has informed me that a, an assistance to firefighters grant was approved for the town of Grandford, which was co-written by the town of North Grandford. We are, will be participating in training related to confined space entry, and that grant was recently awarded to the town of Grandford. So our guys will benefit from having the opportunity to participate in that, in that training. And since we have the dam and the treatment facility and a number of, of issues involving confined space, it'll be great training, free of charge for all of our volunteer companies. In addition, the fire chief has not heard on this same funding source, assistance to firefighters grant, for his application from last year, which was related to the oxygen recharge system that would go up to replace the equipment that's in Company Two. If you recall, it's about a $72,000 grant, and we're still waiting to hear, and we're hopeful that we would receive funding. That requires a 5% match from the town, which would be about $3,600. Well worth it if we can replace that, that equipment. I've also received information from the Director of Parks and Recreation on park facility guidelines that will be submitted to the Parks and Rec Commission. We will be looking, at some point I'll be meeting or reviewing those with the commission, and then a public hearing will be scheduled. I will, when I think it's appropriate, very soon I will be sending those draft guidelines to the town council. If you have any input you might convey through me, I'd be happy to bring it to the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I was informed today via a memo from the police chief that we just received notice officially from Phyllis Stumpfey, one of our senior dispatchers, who will be retiring on May 14th of this year. So that'll be the next retirement of, of the police station. Phyllis is working a long time for the town. And if there are no questions, that is the end of my report.
On that retirement, Richard, is that something that's going to be filled right away, or?
I'm not sure how to answer that. The filling of vacancies at the, at the current time has been something that's been approved at, on a case-by-case basis by the town council. So I'm sure that, that informing, I will pass the information along from the chief to the town council, but it did not come with a formal request to fill the positions, just more informative that these are necessary positions to be filled. I don't know what the impact would be if the position was left vacant for any period of time, and the impact would certainly be on overtime.
Maybe we should get like some of the overtime numbers for dispatchers.
I think they're going to have to fill that position pretty quickly.
There's only one person, so they're going to, they're going to have to fill it when she retires.
Right. They're going to have to. Also, we're going to get hammered with overtime. They got to fill that immediately. They got to start doing it now.
Well, actually, the.
That's in what, May?
It's in May, right. I don't know how, how, what the process is. It's not the same process as filling the police vacancy. There, there are certified people out there. The question is, if they did not fill it, right, they couldn't fill it. I would like to see information on, for the council's consideration of what the overtime impact would be of, of not filling the positions. It would be considerable, but you're not paying the health benefits, so you always have to look at, at what those vacant positions.
Well, a new dispatcher probably wouldn't start where a senior one is leaving, right?
Correct. You don't know what the, what the health benefits situation would be, you know, but it is an important position, and we only have a certain number of them, so.
Right. Or else they fill with policemen, right, and then we pay overtime for police.
Correct.
Right. So we need to do that.
Community events and presentations. A, Presentation of Town's Audit, Lovitsky and Bernie, PC.
Financial statements are broken up into an introduction, financial section, and a statistical section. The statistical section gives a narrative of the finances. The financial section is the financial statements, and then the statistical section in the back gives a more larger analysis, a lot of familiar data and analysis that I think they might be a little interested in when they're reading the report. I'd like to start with the financial statement on page 12. I'll just briefly describe how the financial statement is set up. We have exhibits, we have notes, and then there's schedules behind them. The witness on the financial statements, the notes, give you a little bit of description of some of the numbers in the financial statement, and then the schedule, and that gives some of the detail. So if you want to take a look at further detail of any of these numbers, you can go ahead and get a little bit of the details. On page 12, exhibit A, excuse me. This is your budget actual report. It shows your original, final, and actual numbers for your general fund. You can see from your activity, an additional $735,000. However, because of the current year's budget, $315,000 was reserved for the OPEC contributions, and $150,000 of that previous surplus was designated to reduce income taxes in the, or property taxes in the current fiscal budget. So that netted to seven, an increase in the general fund to $70,000. The unassigned fund balance here is basically what's the balance available to be appropriated in the general. And so for the end, for the beginning of this fiscal year and the ending of the June 30th, 2011 fiscal year, that number was $5,372,000. Any questions? The next area would be exhibit C, which you could find on page 7 and 8. This, this represented, exhibit I think you just looked at was on the budgetary basis of accounting, which would include the incumbents having to spend, while this one would be on the non-expensive basis of accounting, which mainly took the, would include the incumbents. We're also adding to the general fund the SOAR assessment, the bond projects, the capital, non-recurring, and then the immaterial or other non-governmental goals. Again, we have a new format for these fund balances that you probably haven't seen in the past. We're really breaking them down between non-expendable, which would be assets that are in fund balance, that are expendable, such as inventory, prepayments. We have restricted and committed, which has, which would be restricted or committed by a third party, so it's really unfunded. Assigned is, shows management's intentions to spend, but has no actual restrictions. And then finally, the unassigned fund balance, which gives the available to be appropriated. And again, your general fund balance at this level is at $6.6 million. When people are talking about the fund balance, this is not, they're really talking about like the general fund.
Looks like 13% of our, our whole budget? No, would you, the bond people look at that, right?
Sure. I'd say your, your total corporation would be $45 million.
Okay.
And then finally, if there's any questions there.
What was that about the SOAR user fund?
The SOAR assessment.
Yeah.
And that's a project that I believe is just about to be wanting that. That was basically, I believe, the SOAR, this first connected, I used to have a program where you would loan the money to the homeowner.
And then pay back over 20 years.
Yeah.
Right. But there was something about individual amounts or something that was, wasn't right?
Yeah. One of my comments was that, for the last three years, was that the, with the new computer system coming into play, the transfer of data was not transferred correctly, and it was so, it was difficult to actually get the actual account balances off the computer. So what the town is doing is doing it basically on paper, which is a very tedious.
Tedious.
What the town, we, we recommended that that was too drastic, but what they realized that it was so close to its program end that to spend that kind of money would not be appropriate.
Okay. I just wanted you to clarify that.
Sure. About 13, 14 years upon the, so the 13, 14 fiscal year, so that's a fund year. So two more years.
Thank you.
In the finals, financial statements that we presented there is something called ADNY. This basically describes the health of the financial statements, of this health of group organization as it is viewed on an economic basis. And this is where the statistical section comes a little bit easier to look at. So I'd like to go to page 74. The reason why I like to watch, have a fiscal schedule such as this, once we get to exhibit A, it's very difficult to understand it in one year at a time, but you want to see what the town is doing over a series of years. So here, I'll represent 10 years. And what we want to look at here is that, as far as the health of the government, is that it's staying steady with its letting, a steady interest. If there's no questions from here, there was a lot of questions on the special revenue, the funds that are not represented in the general fund. Can I just go through a little bit of that, so you have an understanding of how I look at them and how I look at the current situation? And so this would be the non-major governmental funds, and you could have a, on page 55. And I remember answering a question, why do we have so many funds? And when we look at it from an audit perspective, I said, well, it's easier for us. So this is why, basically. If we just scan across the top, we can see the cash in each account. If we scan along the bottom, we can also see the fund balance in each account. What we always like to see is the fund balance approaching zero. And so if I look at it in multiple years and I see it either growing or shrinking, well, then I, I want to know why, and I research why that's happened. And I know some of the areas that were of concern, were in terms of 57, the Board of Education grant in the cafeteria, in the cafeteria. The Board of Education grant, that's all, it puts this question to the council on the first column. $616,000 in cash at the end of the fiscal year, and the assigned fund balance, or the balance available in that account, $464,000. This was after they had the way of $200,000 for the plus terms fiscal year, but, but you do see that in that area, and it would be of concern to you, and of concern to me, is where is the money going, and is it growing outside of the general fund if something is changed? There's something where if you saw that and you corrected it, take a look at the next column, which is the school cafeteria column. It has $160,000 in fund balance, and $41,000 and $97,000 in accounts receivable in cash. But here, we could explain it very easily, because on June 30th, they don't have inventory since they don't have, school open in July. So you do really want them to fund usually a 60 or 90 day period. So you do really want them to fund usually a 60 or 90 day period. So in this situation, what probably happens in September is the cash available will move down into inventory to serve the children for the next 30 or 60 days. So to have $160,000 fund balance is a very big explanation. So I know the very detailed budget, and you know, I would recommend to take a look at not only the general fund, but take a look at those other general special revenues and consider, you know, these situations. But anyhow, they're on our audit every fiscal year. That's what we do, is we take a look and we ask these questions. Another concern to us is not only a collection of cash, but a collection of deficit. And then we ask, so if we see a special revenue fund that is consistently losing, having a loss, we want to know why. And we ask the town to correct us. This year, there's only been, there's only one deficit. The town has corrected them. Then we do the same thing with the capital budget, the capital projects, which was one of our comments last year, is they were adding to the capital project funds, but some of the old capital project funds were sitting there not being spent. So we asked them to look at some of the ones that are 10 years old, see if they were residuals to our leftover funds. And why don't you get that back in, put that to the fund balance.
Do you know how many of those that we have that have been sitting there?
How many of the?
How many projects?
Usually you have a capital plan every year, and you approve a capital budget for each year.
Okay, but there's all different projects that we do.
Yeah, within one, there's different projects that are done.
Right. Now, is all that money separated, different projects, and then there's excesses in each account?
Yes.
So maybe we can get a report on all the excesses in that account here, and all those different accounts.
We also closed out the, the fund this year, CFP, you closed out the three oldest ones. Something, David's guideline last year was anything wasn't five years old to close up, and something wasn't five years old.
I just want to make sure we don't have money laying around that we can appropriate elsewhere.
Gotcha. And what I suggest is, yeah, the capital projects for the last five years, some of them, again, with reason, they're allowed to last longer. But at that, at a five year, what happens tends, the people who originally appropriated it could forget why it is. So it causes problems in certain towns and cities where then one of the funds might be spent and they don't understand how much money is there. And another reason is that residual equity is just one sitting there for 50 years or whatever.
Right.
Three, five, or seven years is usually, five years is consistent with some federal plans, and seven years is consistent with the state. Usually capital projects don't, would last more than one year, obviously.
Right.
Usually they can't be spent for, but we had some in 2002 that we said, well, we'll only take a look at those and see if those projects.
Thank you.
It's the same way with looking at the special project funds. I go through that detail in this report, but I go through each one of those projects too. And I said, okay, let's see a bill. I just wanted to explain what, as far as, whether the dollars, because a lot of the questions were in the last time I met. And if you just, I had a handout that basically just described some other aspects of the audit. And it's the last thing you could really just show me a little bit of, some of the limitations we had and some of the limitations I had to do. One of the questions, what I had in the last meeting was that the board of education, they saw that the board of education special revenue for the funds provided, board of education general fund with a lot of grants. And, you know, I looked into it, and what that was, was a little of $400,000 of a grant when it didn't come in at year end, that they had to borrow from the general fund. And the money which was received in the state government was paid back to the general fund. So that's, it was a certain amount of borrowing. That was, to be honest, what the expenses were. So that would be okay. What happened, one of my, one thing I noticed in the past audits was that there were 1099s issued in certain situations. And that was pretty consistent with board of education's across the state at that time, simply because the guidelines were very loose. Since then, the IRS has mentioned that the, that information was made, might have been reported incorrectly, but board of education knew this was across the country, and they recommended that they review. I passed that on to the board of education, Department of Education, explaining, and he did change everything to only be a W2, which was no 1099 issue to employees at the board of education. One other question was that the transportation allowance, which is called on their, on certain contracts, less than a half dozen employees at the board of education have these, is actually a, it's a non-conable plan for travel between schools. And so that's also recorded on your W2 under gross income. And specifically for the, to reimburse the employees for use of their car. And then the cafeteria.
Before you get off that number.
Sure.
So you looked at all this?
Yes.
And those numbers didn't jump out as being substantial or large?
What I do in any.
Oh, you didn't look at that?
Is I take the administrator's employee contracts, and I take a look at what their fees are, what they're being, what their salaries are, what their allowances are, or allowances, allowances, and any other type of thing that is not usual. What I say not usual, not in the employee handbook of what the normal employee getting in the board of education. And I trace those to make sure that all those are accurate. Another thing what I do is I look through the checking, checkbook for all checks that were written to that employee, and I review, all of them now are reimbursed. Usually, most of these are reimbursements for either purchases or something like that, and I review those.
So I guess my question is, so say, you know, we present a budget in town that, you know, is what we budget for. So I'm wondering how big, how much difference is there on these W2s versus what's published in the budget for these certain employees? I mean, are we looking at $500 or $10,000?
Yeah, for their travel reimbursements?
Yeah. Well, for anything, for the W2s, what's published as their salary, are the W2s close to that?
Is it close to that? It's, it's not hundred, but it's over $1,000 the travel reimbursement, you know? Normally, a normal reimbursement would be probably over a hundred, and theirs is also. What was it actually this year, it moves up a little bit or down a little bit this year, depending on what it is? But I would say it would be probably between $4,000 and $8,000 for this.
Okay, so they're kind of between $4,000 and $8,000 for travel for, okay.
Yeah. The employee contract, that's a whole different information. So that might be, a lot of people do ask.
You're saying $4,000 per person or the whole?
Yeah, so combined or individually?
No, 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 this is for administrators only.
But a single administrator would have $4,000, $8,000.
Yeah, so if you break that down, it would only be, it'd be 300 or more is probably a normal. So if we multiply that out for a year.
Okay. Nine months is 27. Nine months is 27.
But if we wanted to, instead of, if we wanted to, we could get their W2s and look at our, what's budgeted and do that.
They have, they're approved.
No, is that for? We must create their W2s, so.
No, they do.
The board of education creates their W2s.
Is that for out-of-state travel too, Dave? Or is that just?
Out-of-state travel.
It's like conferences and things like that?
I did see some out-of-state travel that was very first. So I think this is just local travel.
Just local, between our schools is what you're saying?
That's, it's in part with their employee contract. So it was the agreement or the acceptance of the job.
And then the, the next item there, if you were off the W2s.
No, no, no.
The cafeteria equipment that we had a question on, and that question came from when we were on tour over there. We were told that some pretty nice equipment wasn't ours. And so, so you have no idea whether somebody thinks they own that, you just know that we don't lease any equipment.
Yeah, what I tell, first of all, I asked the superintendent and the finance director, and they told me no. And I also went through their checkbook to see any cafeteria room, to see if I saw any payment for any capital leases already.
Okay, so then, so then for us counselors that we were given then, we, either we were given wrong information at the time, or else you were, you're wrong information?
I asked, I asked the administrators that also, and they believed that when they, they misrepresented maybe the tour, I don't say misrepresented, they, as far as they remember, they believe that when they're giving the tour, they said that this wasn't for this school, but it was being transferred to another school. And I think that's what happened, and which doesn't.
I'll be honest with you. I clearly remember being told that they did not own outright and not transferable equipment. You specifically remember being told or being given information with no?
I asked that question directly, that was asked to me, and that's what they provided to me. And I did look through the checkbook. I don't see any payments of any.
There's no lease agreement to own that?
Well, yeah.
Because a lot of times for restaurants, you do a lease agreement, and then at the end of the agreement, when you've finished paying it for three years, five years, the equipment's yours, for like a dollar.
Equipment, one of those, no. As of today, there was no, there was no reoccurring, what I went through is, I mean, I looked through the finance company that they were paying on a monthly basis, I couldn't find it.
So it's sounding like it's paid to date then, still.
Somebody paid for it.
That was a while back or?
That was a tour we did, was it at night? When you had that night?
Yeah, we did one night, we were walking through this kitchen and had some very nice.
It was shortly after the school was closed.
Right, the transition, we went through that caf and the gym.
Yeah, so it was within a year and a half.
Yeah.
Within a year and a half.
And some of us asked like, well, wow, what happens with this stuff? And it's like, oh, that's not yours. So.
Well, if they sold used equipment, they're gonna, pennies on the dollar anyway for used equipment, that's garbage.
I think the term is that it's the town's equipment. I think that's what David's conclusion is, that they own it, it's the town's equipment operated currently by the board of education.
Okay, well, we're not getting anyone here, but I remember it the same way you do. So, you know.
We could, I mean, we looked at, I looked at.
No, you did the best you could.
Yeah, I mean, if there was someone there hiding it, I think something like that would pop up.
I'm pretty sure that equipment's probably longed up.
The lease or the, okay, equipment?
Well, the equipment we were talking about.
I saw it on eBay.
Well, I did.
I mean, there's no inventory of equipment owned.
Oh, no, they have it.
Yeah, there's assets.
I mean, yeah, I limited it to completely this current year, so if they, if they bought it, it's only in the past year.
Can I just make something clear? Because we're going through this with the police vehicles, any surplus equipment, when we went through this with MBIS, any surplus equipment that is owned by the town, when it's declared to be surplus by the agency or department, has to come through my office to be signed off to actually be either reassigned or become surplus. So there's been no kitchen equipment of late that has come through in that manner.
So in the intermediate school, they reuse their old equipment, or they bought new equipment in the new school?
The intermediate school was, there was a demo plan that was, that was approved in that, that was, I'm not, I don't think we're talking about that. I thought we were talking about Stanley T. Stanley T. equipment is still in place, the last time I was through there, which was about three or four weeks ago.
Okay. And one more, one more thing on, on page 86, I just, I just wanted to point this out to, there's a couple of interesting things here. So per capita, so if every man, woman, child, and newborn baby in the town of North Ramford is currently $3,486 in debt, do you agree with that statement?
How this works is, it's not always.
Okay, how's this work?
That's one way to look at it. That number is a comparison number. It's a great number to compare to another town. It's not, you know.
All right, so we're not, we may not be exactly that.
Yeah, you asked everyone for that.
So my question.
The reason, reason.
Well, we could be, we could do it at a debt to zero if everybody would just ante up.
What's not represented here is probably your commercial. And so this is, you also.
Okay, so like, this is, this is just per people who live there?
It's a very good comparative number though, simply because the population.
So having said that, is there a chart yet, that's 2011, and we're going into debt for how many more years? If we spend no more money, our debt service goes up, this is probably for Anthony. How many more years are we going up?
13, 14, I believe is the peak.
13, 14 peaks. So two more years that we're gonna, we're gonna increase that debt for each person. Then the other thing is on the.
We're actually increasing the debt, of course, we're gonna increase the debt service.
Each, each man, woman, child, and newborn baby is gonna owe a little bit more.
As long, yeah.
If we don't spend any more money.
That's only if you, if only say more people.
Right. If what we've already borrowed.
Yes.
Our debt is going up till 2013, 14.
I think you're taking your annual pay.
Debt service.
Your, your annual pay is going up, but your debt is going down in the past. So, yeah. Page 36 shows a.
Hang on, I wasn't done with page 88. So now we go to page 88, and this was interesting. And this is, this is just from me to all the town employees and board of ed employees. Your information is correct, in 2007, our per capita people who owe all this money, their salary, their, their income, their personal income dropped about 450 bucks and has held steady from 2007 to now. So that's impressive that we haven't, they haven't dropped more than that. But, so for, for all the municipal employees who have gotten raises since 2007 or may get another one, the people paying that have lost money.
Let me explain something. This information is.
I like it the way I like it.
They only, they only check it every X years.
Yeah, good luck on that information.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, I can just tell you where I get it from, and this is also, I put this in here because this is the numbers I calculate the per capita.
I like these numbers. These are.
Actually, your information, right, you know, is checked every year, and that's actually pretty, I mean.
Okay. All right, let's go to, what page did you want to go to?
36.
36?
36, it shows your, you're interested in your debt changes for the rest of the year. So I just wanted to tell you that that number, what you're providing by, is the $50,000 at the bottom. So every year you pay down your debt, you're taking down, protecting away $3 million away from your debt. So if you didn't borrow again, every year that number will be going down, down, down.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. And thanks for looking into our specific questions.
Like I said, that's part of our audit. Anything, where are your auditors, if there are any questions? Thank you.
Oh, I got one question for you. One more. We actually, the, we have a check register here, or a couple of them. And that's, I wanted to show you, because you said you look at check registers, so I wanted to show you one here, and maybe it needs to, because it was confusing for us. I actually have asked some board of ed members that explained it to me. But I'm thinking maybe they should go in and change it. So if you, I'll show it to you here. It says, there's a check for, there's a check for $41,000 written out to business manager.
Yeah, I know that.
No town, no nothing. So for a layman.
Right after those things.
For a layman here, I mean, why wouldn't you type in, apparently it's for.
Wallingford.
Lyman Hall students in Wallingford. Why wouldn't somebody who knows, I mean, you know, that this is a public document?
Memo.
It's gonna get looked at. How about if it said business manager, Towne of Wallingford?
Yeah. No, I, I look at it the same way, and I.
That's a different check underneath it though.
Yeah, but the, you're going.
$4590 is business manager, $4591 is Towne of.
You're only capturing the first line of information. So on line two of that payee is business manager of Towne of Wallingford, or Wallingford, whatever it's called. So you only see, you're reportedly capturing that first line of information, not the full payee name. But that's a tuition payment, yeah, I looked at the same thing. But was it, did you, did you, did you receive it through the framework information or?
No.
Yeah, well, sometimes if you do, I do choose to make sure that it, the correct information.
I could.
I was providing the same information, probably it wasn't the correct information, so I was very questioned.
Al General gets his information in excess of the tenet age.
No, and, and we, we got the answer before tonight, but I mean, for, if, you know, for us, as a layman looking at this stuff, it's like, what is this?
Big stipend.
So...
Yeah, like I said, yeah, the framework for information, I hope they would, yeah, just make it...
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Item six, citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. A, letter from Jim Dwyer, dated December 30th, 2011. Good morning, Richard. Could you please add these to the most of your agenda for the next town council meeting under communication? One, I would like to thank the town council members for their countless volunteering hours that they have given to our town council meetings for the past two years. I hope that these current town council members will resolve to continue benefiting the town residents of North Bramford. Two, I would like to publicly thank J.T., which is Joe Tenzar, for his heartwarming speech and educational gift of the DVD to the town council members at the town meeting held December 13th. He has done an excellent job as an educator in our town. Three, I would like to thank Frank Rolla and his crew for doing a miraculous job this past year. I hope that his job as a public works director will be a little bit easier this coming year. If you could please put the, these thank yous in your upcoming agenda for the next meeting, I would appreciate it. Thank you sincerely, Jim Dwyer, from Bramford Resina. Item B, letter from Scott Schoonmaker, dated January 11th, 2012, regarding NBHS five-year graduation dollar. Last Saturday, the town council and the Board of Education met, at Stanley T., we had an hour meeting, with regards to some capital equipment and getting rid of the budget. Superintendent thanked the council for their time, and provided some information. Anybody have any questions? Resignations and appointments. Yeah. Sorry, I'll see you back there.
Congresswoman, if you want, no, come on in. Cancel the recycling committee has moved over to the Economic Development Commission, and I think that's a good, fresh blood. And we met, and we talked one day for a few minutes, and I know you're trying to drum up new business, but maybe it's time, and I think Richard alluded to that a little bit, that you also maybe talk to the existing businesses. And one question I had presented to Dan, I don't know if you brought it up at Monday's meeting, was years ago, the ice rink tried to expand, and for whatever reasons, the town didn't allow that. But, as a layman, and not part of the inner circle, it's a business on a dead-end road, there's no heavy trucks hauling product in and out of there, it doesn't manufacture anything, it's not noisy, what do you get out of it? Maybe a little melted ice on the lawn. And, for some reason, at that time, they were not allowed to expand.
I'll tell you why.
Okay.
There was a lot of opposition at the planning and zoning meeting, because the property abuts the Newton property, and there was a lot of opposition about expanding anything out that way.
Well, is it time to maybe re-meet or rework?
Could be, could be.
You know, because if you're not business friendly, you're not gonna ever expand, and you're gonna have even trouble hanging on to who you got. I mean, I consider that not business friendly, when you have a businessman, and, and like I say, it's the most ideal business you could have, because there's no...
I know, but I think they look at how much...
This town's been that way forever.
Well, then, you're not gonna have economic development.
You're right, Cliff, I agree with you 100 percent.
Now, it's time to maybe move back, the economy's tough. Go back to your businesses in town, and see if there's programs, grants, anything you can do to help existing businesses, and maybe if they need more positive, you will pull in other businesses.
At least don't make them jump high hurdles, or don't be opposed to something that's really not gonna cause any problems.
The small business gets beat up by the state, but why should they just leave not to help other businesses?
I agree with you, I agree with you.
So, I mean, that's just one question I had, because I, I just cannot believe that that was allowed to happen, because like I say, it's not a traffic issue per se.
There was also some opposition to the Belfanti property, which abuts the ice rink property.
Yeah.
They didn't want certain businesses out there, I don't know, did you talk to him recently, or at all, Richard, Belfanti?
Actually, I've spoken to Mike Belfanti at the education, and he's on our guest list, he and Alex Acadino are on our guest list for the meeting. And also, not necessarily invited guests, but directed guests, would be our town hall staff that works with our land use and development agencies, our town planner, our town engineer is here with us tonight, and our building official, will all be in attendance, along with myself. So, you can now start to put faces with names, and, you know, there, there's an opportunity to, for those folks to get a little bit more comfortable.
Yeah, like I say, if we stalemate it and new business, let's try to refresh our existing business people, you know, just, I'm sure after a while, I mean, your businessman, your businessman, you know, Al, your businessman...
If we keep saying no to businesses, people's property taxes are gonna keep going up and up. We have to change our attitude towards this whole situation.
Like Kelly Construction, a huge construction company out of West Haven, closes doors. Unfurtive, they were locked in with Yale, I mean, they were like a catalytic construction companies, and the economy hasn't stopped bottoming out, from what I can see.
No, it hasn't bottomed down at all.
Yeah.
I think they're, I think they're the ones that built Kelly Plaza up there, where it not is and everything.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, so I don't think the bottom's hit yet, and so I think it is time to maybe say, well, yeah, maybe we could make this work this time.
That's why we're trying to...
At least in town.
Central Plaza needs help also, a lot of help.
So hopefully that can...
Well, that's why we're having this meeting.
Nobody wants to come in and spend that kind of money, if they're gonna get stonewalled.
Right. Well, I mean, that's just one question I have for Dan, and I think he's a good ad, I mean, he did an excellent job on recycling, didn't he? You know, so I do...
He didn't want to leave, we had to coerce him.
Well, I know, but, you know, and it was, he's energetic, it was...
He's got a lot of energy.
He's a spark.
He's a smart kid, too.
Yeah, so I mean, it's nice to have the younger blood in town, because they're eventually gonna run the town.
That's true.
Thank you.
Roger, Lonley, tomorrow, we're gonna be having a meeting with Richard Brannigan, in reference to a tax freeze for the town of North Bramford. What I'd like to do is maybe ask one or two of the town council to be there, for maybe...
What time is it, what time is it?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
One or two to be there would be good, because no matter what we come up with, it's gonna come back to the town council, because you all, everybody's gotta look at. It's gonna be tough, gonna be a hard thing to do, but Senator Meyer called me last Wednesday at home, and he told me what Guilford has, they do have a tax freeze for seniors in Guilford, and it's, it's pretty good. Their income, their income limit is $100,000, which is a lot of money, $100,000 or $100,000. So, this is all gonna be talked about tomorrow. And the other thing that I want to say is, I'm still interested in being on that charter revision committee, so I see it's on your agenda, and just see what we can do. Thanks a lot.
Okay, all right, thanks, Roger. Do you bring a lunch, do you bring a lunch tomorrow? Do you bring a lunch tomorrow?
Oh, my lunch?
No free lunches.
Ken, Ken, the big, mostly known as the 180 Village Street, one concern that's been bothering me for a number of years now, the way the bidding process works on small jobs in the town, a job that's, say, $1,500, or, or, first, could somebody explain to me exactly how it, how it works, and then I can think from there?
Sure, I can, I can explain, and you may have gotten a call today to, to bid on a small job, and it's the purchasing agents that needs my discretion on any of the small jobs, where we think it can be more competitive by getting additional estimates. Anything over $7,500 goes up to formal public bid, anything up to $7,500, but, but over, I think it's a $3,000, thirty-five hundred dollar threshold, requires three written quotes to come in. Anything up to $3,500 requires three verbal estimates over a certain threshold, I think it's a $500 threshold, or something to that effect. But, whenever we think we wanna get a couple of different quotes, especially from local vendors, to quote on projects, we're certainly gonna go ahead and do that. We're trying not to make it an inconvenience for contractors, we're trying to get competitive prices for the town, and make sure that we're doing things the right way. Two contractors may look at a particular project, and a third may come in and have a, a different way of doing things, that may be a better way of doing it as well, so...
Okay, with, with that in mind, just, just an idea, I don't know, I know you're revisiting the charter, it seems to me that a job that's $1,500, $1,300, I've, I've looked at several of them, by the time yourself, the Michelle, Michelle, the purchasing agent goes out, or Franny goes out, that's three trips out to a job, three contractors coming out to look at it, and three, three quotes being written up for a $3,500 job. It seems to me like the town should have, whether it be one carpenter with a rate, one electrician with a rate, one plumber with a rate, if a job like that needs to be done, you call them, you call them up and, and you do that. Now, I'm not, I'm not saying myself, I'm gonna give you, for instance, on the Reynolds Beer's house, which I believe I got a call on today, about two or three years ago, I believe I was called for the same job, and as standing on the roof, this, this is the window and the flashing up over the front engine roof, I believe, as I was standing on that roof, two, three years ago, I don't know the exact date, I called down to the purchasing agent, and I said to him, you told me you had a roof leak here. And I said to her that, you wanna come down, and I'll explain to you what I see, and I don't believe it's the whole roof, I think some cladboard needs to come off, some flashing needs to be put in right, and the, the window needed to be fixed properly. I believe, I, I'm pulling a number out of my head, but I believe it's pretty close, I think it was a $3,200 or $3,300 job, that I quoted at that time, to do the roof, the flashing. I, I can't say right on the money, I didn't have time to check, check my records, but that job was giving, given out, and I, I believe. The work was performed in some other part of the building, and when I made that call to the purchasing agent, she told me to write it up, as you see, what you see that needs to be done, and we'll take it from there, and we'll decide who we're gonna appoint it to. I believe that same job is going out to bid again now. So, if you had somebody that was competent and did, did a $1,500 job, a $1,300 job, it's gonna, it's gonna cut, Franny's time to be doing something else, it's gonna cut your purchasing agent's time to be doing something else, it's something to think about. And, I'm not looking for work, I have, I'm fortunate that I have plenty of work, but there are other contractors in town that could, could do that work, and I think it wouldn't, I think somebody with the best interest of the town is better than, than a bid on a $1,500 job. That's just my opinion, it's been bothering me, all, all the time that goes into some of these small jobs, you're better, you're better off if there was a way to do it, to, to go to that room, having an electrician, plumber, you know, so much an hour, and if you got a job that's $2,000, or $1,500, call them up, and once they burn it, you get rid of them. I think, I think it'll be better for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Resignations and appointments. A, appointment, liaisons to boards and commissions.
Do we have a list of what we're doing? We have the fire, fire commission? I move to put Mike Duty on the, to be the council representative on the fire commission?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Kendalora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooley?
I'm staying.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Whitmore?
I don't think she heard.
Councilor Whitmore?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to move the appointment of Al Rose to the Finance Committee, to serve as chairman of Finance Committee.
Second. Moved by Counselor Whitmore, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Kendalora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
I'm staying.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooley?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Whitmore?
Yes.
All right, item eight, unfinished business discussion in action regarding, A, North Bramford High School roof project.
Mr. Mayor, I updated the council on where we are with the request for qualifications now. Included in your packet was a summary of where we are with the budget expenditures based on what was appropriated last summer by the town council, the $433,661, what's been expended to date, and what the current unencumbered balance is. I don't believe there are any major pending items, there's a few items, change orders that are pending with the Fermi Project Building Committee, I don't believe in total there, there are more than $5,000. So, of that $53,000, you know, between $45,000 and $50,000, it's certainly unencumbered at this particular point in time, and would certainly go, help go towards financing for an architect once one is selected. Do we have motion to allocate some funding for that? No, I, we're several months away, I think, unfortunately, from the selection of an architect, where we know that the fees are going to be, we have to do that request for qualification first, then we start talking about the...
And this is just for the next phase of the roof?
For the next phase, not for the, the current project, it was just...
Item B, charter revision. I think we need to start talking about the size of the committee.
Mr. Mayor, I think that we should have seven on there, instead of five. First charter commission has seven.
Seven's a lot easier to get a point.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
House of five is out, but it certainly needs to be more, or seven, nine, maybe nine's getting a bit cumbersome.
Everybody's comfortable with seven.
If everybody's comfortable with the resolution, do you hear, Barbara Zavala, Town Council of North Bramford, in accordance with section seven, 188b, of the Connecticut General Stat- Statute establishes a charter revision commission, commission to consist of seven members, and is charged to consider the following, I don't know if we had the recommendations ever, do you wanna add that to it, or, have motions, or just stop at seven members?
We just stopped at seven members.
Okay.
We're gonna handle that the next minute.
Second.
Made by Counselor Whitmore, seconded by Counselor Fawnin.
Mayor Kendalora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooley?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Whitmore?
Yes.
New business discussion in action. New business discussion and action. Item A, Connecticut Project, number 98-93, Route 80 and 139.
Mr. Mayor, we've added this information item, this was brought up at the last council meeting, and it was fairly clear what the direction to the staff was to be. The town engineer on our behalf sent some correspondence to the state DOT, and it's pretty clear from their correspondence that they would prefer not to come to the town council. We're looking for some, some direction to follow up, whether you want us to pursue this more formally with DOT, or do you want us to have the meeting and report back, or some combination thereof?
Well, since I think this was a thing that I kind of asked for, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it not being at the town council. The only thing I was looking for was for them to answer the questions that Jonathan Bodwell had from the, you know, representing the church and their property, because he came here, he, you know, made a bunch of statements and, and had questions for them, and I was told they never answered or responded to them. So, so I have, you know, I'm fine with it being during business hours, as long as Jonathan Bodwell is fine with it, and the church group. I know Scott Small's involved with it and.
And I have talked to him in terms of it, and he basically agreed that he's fine with it, you know, on that church staff level at this point. If there were any issues, certainly we'll report back.
I mean, they're the ones with the issue. It wasn't a town council issue. I was just.
But it was in support of them, I understand that.
Right.
So there has been that correspondence. We have got back to DOT by the way, it was going. They certainly do that and report back to town. And we'll make sure that both Kurt and I are there, and we'll bring the grain, if we need reinforcements, but we'll make sure John Bodwell and Scott Small are there.
Because I know John had, you know, he had questions, he was questioning some of the grading and stuff.
But grading is graded.
And, I mean, you got to, Jonathan's been out it a long time, so if he, if he has concerns, I think they at least ought to answer him, but, okay.
Thank you.
Good. Item B, municipal solid waste recycling subcommittee.
Mr. Mayor, as I said earlier in talking about the reports of boards and commissions, there are options that I point out in my memorandum here of how the town can handle its, its solid waste that generates, not just municipal solid waste, mixed solid waste, but also the recycling component. And this is a very important issue. And coincidentally, and somewhat by plan, because of the way we staggered the term of the current collection contract that we have with John's refuse, that was a two-year contract only with no extensions allowed, because December, June 30th of 2012 is the expiration of our CRRA agreement, and there is no successor agreement in place. That's one of the options that we have. Also, to have the collection contract up gives us some additional leverage in, in the world of trash collection. And this, this has been one of those issues that we've been talking about with the hazardous waste and recycling committee for a number of months now off and on. And now is the time that I believe the decisions and the request for proposals and bid structure can be set up. It would be important to have some support from the hazardous waste and recycling committee and two volunteers, Tom Scalpo, who actually is here tonight, and Mary Bigelow, the chairperson, have both volunteered. And I think this is the type of, of important decision for the council that have some council part of that structure and helping to review all of the information would be helpful as well as we get ready to present it, the options to the council. This is a council decision. Before anything goes out onto the street, the council should be well informed as to what those options and approve those options. And there are a number of ways to do this in the bid documents, including turnkey disposal option, which puts all of the responsibility in the vendor's hands. So there are, from what I'm being told, ways of saving a substantial amount of money involved with some of these options, not just on the tip fee, but on the collection. And this may be the opportunity to discuss automated collection as well. I know that's been reviewed in the past, but that can be part of a structured contract. So this is the first step. I believe the committee is not appointed tonight. We need, we're going to begin the process, and my office has already started the process of assembling information and talking with other communities that have gone through this recently.
So this motion permits a subcommittee to be formed?
Yes.
And you'd like the two people that are interested in serving on the committee to be appointed tonight?
Yes, as well as any council members who would like to serve. If there are otherwise, you know, we could do this ourselves and bring the information back to the full council.
Well, I'll move the motion. Town council hereby appoints the following individuals to serve on the Mississauga Solid Waste Recycling Subcommittee, and that said committee provide a report to the town council no later than February 29, 2012. The two people to be appointed are Mary Bigelow from the Hazardous Waste Committee and Tom Scalpo.
No. Mike's volunteering as a council member to be on that.
Mike Duty?
I'll second it. Or did somebody second it?
Okay, I included Mike Duty. Did you second that too?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion made by Councilor Whitmore, seconded by Deputy Mayor Rose, and it also included Councilor Mike Duty to sit on that committee. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooley?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Whitmore?
Yes.
Before we get off this completely, so Richard, do you see this, like, is this committee, this committee and yourself going to, like, would you contact CRRA and say, hey, what would you charge us for, I mean, are you going to go that far? And are you going to contact the operators of the Wallingford Resource Recovery?
Some of that's already been done, yes. The answer is yes.
Okay, so on the 29th, we're going to have different fees from these places? Okay.
You'll have some ballpark, you won't have specific, CRRA you'll probably have a specific fee, Covanta you'll have a general fee, they just signed up Madison-Gilford, I think their fee was $65 a ton. Yeah, I don't want to get into all the great detail, but yeah, we'll get as much information as we can and.
What is our fee now, Richard?
$69 a ton for disposal. And then we pay for collection on top of that.
I think collection includes fuel for transportation.
Yes.
To Essex versus Wallingford and.
Yes.
And is there any, I mean, is there any urgency in this? Is the Wallingford one apt to be, or are they going to be, can they be, like, take all that they can get? Are they close to having full capacity or?
Wallingford still has, to my knowledge, 25,000 tons that they've committed through CRRA. And please don't quote me on that, but about six or seven months ago, that was the number that was, that was floated out there, that CRRA had capacity control of in Wallingford's plant. They also, most plants are still dealing with the spot market, so they're still bringing in commercial waste that's not, not from member, member town's contracts. The other thing that's happening with, with the waste industry is the volume of waste as recycling increases, the volume of waste is diminishing. So waste to energy plants are going to be, in the next five to 10 years, are going to be looking for trash. So these long-term commitments that are out there are one of those options that we really need to, to look at, because you're paying for infrastructure and you're paying for capital costs. We were talking about capital costs earlier. You're talking about long-term capital costs for plants that are starving for waste and bringing in waste at discounted rates from people who are paying no capital cost. So that's an option for us to be one of those spot market communities. And there'll be more and more of it. So there are some, some great opportunities here, and we'll have as much information as we can.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item C, proposed budget preparation schedule for the year 2012, 13. Proposed motion.
I'll move that.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Duty, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooley?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Whitmore?
Yes.
The squad.
Before we get off this one, I have a question for Anthony. If you could, since it's on the budget schedule, can you get us the total amount of tax dollars that we spent last year on the Board of Ed budget? I know they had, like, a federal grant and maybe some state grants.
You mean what's budgeted for this, this current fiscal year that we're in?
Right. The last budget we approved.
Which is the one we're in right now?
The actual tax dollars, so that.
It's on the financial report, whatever's on the financial report.
So that was what we raised through taxes?
That's correct.
With no reimbursements or anything coming back?
It's recorded as taxpayer expense.
Taxpayer expense.
Can you repeat that, Anthony?
And what was their, what, do you have that, does that sound there? I don't have that in front of me. Is that, what was the total budget last year?
Was it the year before?
What was their total budget?
I don't have that.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, you're talking about expenses?
I'm looking for the difference.
You want net, you want?
No, when they, this is what I'm looking for. When they come before us with their percentage increase, last year they had, they had money.
The federal jobs credit, they took off of their increase.
So I want the percentage increase of tax dollars, not, not that.
No grant money.
No grant money.
There's no grant money out of the company this year.
There's always, they always get some.
Or not to have.
Their budget's made up of multiple parts. They have the taxpayer funded portion, then they have the grant funded portion, whether it's special ed grants, things like that. I don't have access to all the grants.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking for. I want to be clear when, let's say they're, so whatever their budget was last year, if it was.
$28 million change.
$28 million and change.
Can you get their grant money?
I can ask.
So, so let's say, let's say that they, let's say we wanted to give them the same amount of money this year and they had no grants. Let's say that we said, okay, we're going to have a zero increase, but they don't get the grants. I want to know what that difference is. And I don't need that now, but we do need that when we are going forward.
Do you want the whole ship matched, special ed, general research, all the grants they get?
Yeah. You know, I mean, they certainly will have their grants, so we just need to be able to be clear on, you know, they, they come before us with a percentage increase.
Correct.
It really would be a hypothetical percentage increase, it, like, that federal money is gone. So, so in other words, in my mind, for us to get, give them a zero increase, we have to, the taxpayers have to fund that federal grant. Is that correct or am I wrong?
They'll get a state grant next year, they'll submit special ed grants.
You're talking about the federal stimulus grant.
Right.
The two-year grant.
The two-year grant, they used the last time last year.
$74,000.
$74,000 in grant money. That's what you want to see isolated, so we're comparing apples for apples. The year, and last year was a little bit more confusing, because you still had the federal share.
Right, the 10/11.
ECS funds from the two-year commitment. So it was a little more difficult to compare apples for apples last year. I think we know what, how to frame this particular issue when we do that number.
I, I mean, I know, Anthony, you always get us to, you know, where we're at with the mill rate and everything, which if, you know, so if we're, so certainly that will explain where, when we're at zero. So, because how big was that federal grant last year?
Well.
400?
$474,000.
So I guess, I guess my point is, if, if we didn't give them an increase this year of their budget, we still have to make up $474,000. Okay, so that's my point.
That's correct. Status quo would be $474,000.
Status quo from the tax dollars.
Out of your pocket, exactly.
That's what my last year.
Right, okay.
And if you looked on.
And I'm only doing this because I clearly remember telling them when we voted on it last year, and we knew they had this money in there, and there were people, certainly people in town that thought we were too generous. You know, I, you know, I told them point blank, I'm going to be looking at what the taxpayer funded next year. So here it is next year, and I'm looking at what the taxpayer funded for their increase, or zero.
Correct.
But in my mind, a zero increase, they have to make up $472,000 on their own, so. Because I'm not looking to raise taxes in town, you know? I mean, there's nothing good about the economy out there. So, all right, so I guess I've gone off on that long enough.
All right, thanks, Al.
Anthony, can we add, add the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program on for H? I know we didn't add it on yet.
Okay.
Make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Doody, seconded by Councilor Whitmore. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooley?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Yes.
Item D, SCROGS Regional Performance Incentive Program. Proposal to establish a regional web-based GIS program. Proposed resolution.
I take it this money's coming out of their budget?
This is part of the SCROGS work.
It doesn't cost us anyone, right?
It does not cost the town.
Okay. I'll move the motion.
Moved by Councilor Whitmore, seconded by Councilor Esposito. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Dooley?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Yes.
The financial report, December 31, 2011.
Good evening. A couple of points I'd like to just mention, as Councilor Rose had mentioned, Deputy Mayor Rose, I'm sorry, at the last meeting. The taxpayers continue to pay their bills very well in West Bramford. You see, this year we're at 60.2% of the current budget compared to 57.6% last year. Also, coupled with the fine working of our tax department. Next line down is the Lincoln Property Taxes, $196,000 this year compared to $96,000 last year, another fine boost. So revenues were about 2% ahead of last year in total. Looking on the expenditure side of the page, we're just about on target with last year. The one item that jumps out at you being over expect was something that Councilor Caprio had mentioned previously also, was the town attorney line. And we historically under-budget that line, and I know, I think I mentioned it a couple meetings ago. And when it comes time to the budget, I'm going to give you a five to 10-year analysis of what that department's actually spent, and we've actually budgeted appropriately going forward. One thing I mentioned to the finance committee, we all know that there's four police retirees this year, and his third is going to be a fifth dispatcher retiree this year. When these long-term employees leave, they take a large chunk of sick and vacation with them. That's not budgeted in our budget. Typically, we scrape that together come the end of the year, try to find some savings. We're now looking to about $40 million, one of the people retired, that we're going to have to hope that our expenditure stays intact or in the savings, we can find that money amongst the departments. So keep that in the back of your head. Things are very good now. It's an excellent financial report, I believe, and so keep that in the back of your head, that lingering number is out there, about $40 million, we'll scrape together.
Are the dispatchers in with the police?
They're staff, but they also, they get a, I think it's 160, I forget the exact number, they get that most rare days of sick time and any accumulated vacations you may have.
But they're in a different union.
That's correct, in a separate union.
Thank you.
So they're absolutely?
That's correct. That's correct.
Anthony, on regards to the budget and when Al was talking about the BOE, can you just get the figure for us? Because if you look at the 10-11 budget BOE versus 11-12, I know that was the last year of the feds doing the ECS money. So, on here, it's the $28,286, but then the feds did like a million something, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so that would...
That would add.
Originally, that was part of their budget, but then the part of the feds' program was they gave us that ECS money, so that reduced...
That's exactly right. And you got it directly, BOE got it directly. We did...
Right. That's why there's such a big difference between 10-11 and 11-12.
Jump back to the top of the page, the same difference on the education line, $7.2 million ECS grant last year, $8.2 million this year. $7 million came off both sides of the equation, revenue and the expense. This year, it's on both sides of the equation.
Right, okay.
Thank you, Anthony. Have approval of tax refunds?
Second.
Moved by Councilor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Angeloni. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Doody?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
Item G, finance subcommittee draft agenda for February 8, 2012, meeting.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Council Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Doody. Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Doody?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
Item H, energy.
I'll move a motion to town council, but town in North Branford hereby authorizes Richard Branigan, town manager, on behalf of town in North Branford to apply for state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection funds for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. Energy efficiency and conservation block grant program said funds used for a purpose of conserving existing exterior lighting at North Branford High School and Toto Valley Elementary School.
Moved by Councilor Doody, seconded by Councilor Esposito. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, just, this has been a work in quick progress. We received this grant information about a week or so ago and I've been conferring back and forth with the state and Don Lenicki up at the Board of Education. And we did ask, there was some discussion on that Saturday morning about thermostatic controls. There were 40 at the high school and 24 at the classroom at TVES. Those are $815 per unit. Again, though, there's only $300,000 available under this program statewide and it is a competitive grant. So, I just wanted you to be aware of the thought process that we're going through. We're trying to keep it as simple as possible. There is also an opportunity to convert some of the fixtures at Stanley T, the interior fixtures that were not included, but we're going through the construction project there and I don't know if we want to muddy the waters. The simplest way to do this is to take some of our 1,000-watt metal halides and convert them down to 400-watt metal halides and save the electricity at both the high school and at TVES. It's simple, quick, and we can accomplish that by the deadline of June 30 of 2012. I think Stanley T will get a little bit fuzzy in trying to meet that.
So, but we, at the Saturday meeting, we had talked about the possible conversion of...
The gas burn, because that's...
Oil, those are not dual fuel.
I know, but that's not, I thought that was this grant.
We had included that as part of the consideration. Upon checking with the state, they were telling us that that's not eligible.
Oh, okay.
So, really, the simplest way to do it is...
It's just what you have here, the lighting conversion?
Yes. But I just wanted you to know the thought process.
That would have been nice to get.
Okay.
Roll call.
Mayor Candy Laura?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rose?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
Yes.
Council Caprio?
Yes.
Council Doody?
Yes.
Council Esposito?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
Yes.
Council Wentworth?
Yes.
Item 10, citizen statements and petitions.
Part two, I'm going to talk trash. Quick question. If you go to automated waste pickup, will you stop by and pick up my trash can as it goes down School Street every, every, automated, even regular trash cans don't work at my house due to the state clouds and the 18-wheelers that come up foothill, you know, up the hill, and they do pick up a lot of speed and the backdraft on them is unbelievable. The only way I can make trash pickup work is I buy the Home Depot heavy-duty bags and lean them against my fence. If forced to go with automated trash, you have to have that within reach of the truck, right? Now, yeah, the arm comes out.
They wheel it to the truck.
Yeah, but they wheel it to the truck.
Okay, all right, because, yeah, if I had to have...
You bungee court it to your fence, it won't go anywhere.
All right, so, I mean, that's what I was wondering.
Give me the bungee court.
Well, I was just concerned because I've tried cans and I've chased them, so I just gave up and I buy the bags and they lay flat enough because with the state clouds and the tractor trailers, it's hard to keep anything where you leave it at night. So, I was under, because I followed that one in Wallingford once or twice and he doesn't get out, you know, and they have to be right on the edge of the road. But that arm comes out far enough and then, of course, what comes out of the can is...
I think that's more on the side roads instead of on Route 68 or, you know, Route 68, they're set back.
But at the same time, 94 percent does get the truck.
Oh, yeah.